Last.
All right. The public order in March for regular working of sole community explicitly. This is the mission of the sole community school is to get each and every student regulars and relevant experiences and analyze achievements for exceptional teaching. Chris, can you follow the role?
I will. Well, here, Jennifer?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Alessa and Coons are both out of town due to spring break.
Thank you, Chris. And I have one vote they offered to join us if they were needed, but we said, we said we were okay. We got it for them.
Yep.
Davis, do you want to spell that out again though? Welcome. I welcome press moves online. So thanks stuff for joining us. Celebration of achievements.
Yes, just to highlight, we talked about this last, last, most of these last month are just, and we put these in the, in the paper, these ran in the paper. Those were our wrestlers at place, our University of Iowa right now contest winner. Girls and boys basketball teams winning a long hat. Our jazz choir, most important exceptional choir as of the end of this year. Got four cheerleaders at our, at the state tournament, the works this week cheering. Dance team has been in competition. And then of course, our art student that designed the poster for the musical.
And musical involved, it was on the Sunday show, it was well attended with social distancing and then and then students did their job, so.
I just want, I just want to highlight Coach Smith got Coach of the Year or something. I didn't know. Yeah, I mean, I think that's from where the program was to where he's not taking it pretty, pretty deal, so.
I think that's, I think that's a disappointing, you know, these things are often athletics, you mentioned one from the other, so it takes a little bit of time. It's like, I appreciate the system we have in place, so. Everyone is supportive. We support our coaches as they make these changes and then we mess up. Some places are critical, well, this isn't working well. Sometimes it takes three more, five years to get everything in place when you go to program like this. The girls' basketball program is, is doing very well. Davis, PSYAC feedback.
Yeah, so every year we do a focus group of students. Jamie, Jamie participated with the group last year. This year we had participating, we had 11 middle school students. And we had 12 high school students. And then we had seven community members, one teacher associate, three teachers and three principals. And Josh Hall participated in this. We did it online. Going online, we put students and community members, PSYAC members into, what do we call those groups? So breakout rooms, breakout rooms where we asked for guiding questions. We asked them, what, what, what learning opportunities are preparing you for future? What are things your teachers do to make you feel welcome and, and provide you a sense of belonging? What do your teachers do to help you? And then what can we do as a district or a school, individual school to make your experience even better? And so we just spent about an hour, hour and 15 minutes in focus groups. This is kind of a general data that we collected. We recorded responses in those. It was interesting. The admin team then took this data and we discussed and analyzed it. If you go through this data, there are, there are, there were nine teacher type actions or strategies that students identified that were really directed towards a relationship before content. So that was noted and it was noted through conversations throughout all the focus groups of students where they felt safe this year as school. Even with COVID, they felt safe with everything that we had in place and, and we provided them. We did look at this as an admin team. We looked at the data and we asked ourselves, what do we notice about the data? What additional questions does the data generate? And then based upon what we heard from our students and our PSYAC members, what can, what can we infer that the district needs to work on? And what do these results need for school improvement in the district? As far as what we need to work on, based upon the information we gathered from our students, it was to establish a better system to better communicate career and academic planning with our students. To find ways to be more available with students one-on-one in the area of career and academic planning as well as social, emotional. And then expand our pedagogy with the personalized learning, establishing clear vision with that. I think our grading practices is part of that, that was brought up. There are a lot of compliments as far as our online platform that we use this year with COVID, the Google Classroom, the technology devices that we, we have available to students. That was all positive. As far as moving forward, as far as school improvements, you know, it's again looking at that I cap curriculum that we've had the high school present a few times, the processes and supports that we have in place for students and families through that academic career planning. Seeking additional opportunities, expanding our partnership with Kirkwood. Creating a point position in the district that focuses on career and academic planning for juniors and senior students. Exploring that middle school offerings with middle school exploratory. And then just reviewing the practices that we have in place that have been successful this year and carrying them over the, for next year. So those are some, some big takeaways from working with our student focus group this year. So, so a lot of problems in the, in the pods, what was? One of the questions, one of the players just moved out of the pods. That, that, that was a middle school strategy that we had. We kept kids in, instead of having kids in their larger cohort groups, we kept them in like pods of six to eight to limit the, the set we, we have to. Kids are junior high kids. They want to socialize. So they're ready to leave those pods behind. And so that's kind of where that's at. And as soon as we can, we will. So what's the, what's the next step in this data, this really will be the ready for next year? It, it'll, it'll keep again I cap as a district priorities on our strategic plan. We, we have been in conversations with Kirkwood as far as maybe partnering with Kirkwood and maybe another district to get some sharing dollars from the state to be able to afford a point person for that current academic planning. That point person would be our liaison with Kirkwood and just help with not only, not only better communicating opportunities that Kirkwood offers, but beyond Kirkwood and outside Kirkwood also. So that's kind of what we're exploring right now, but we're still in conversations as far as can we make that possible for this next school year? Or are we still in those planning phases with Kirkwood to make this reality?
I think one of the questions I had asked you previously is I know the state had some, they added a shared condition. They like, a line of apprenticeships and those sort of things. So it's kind of a group that won't place many directions. It does a lot of that for us in terms of some shorter term internships, but that's, that's another area to look at. It's physically feasible. I know some of that, those sharing arrangements can make it very expensive to do, but the bonus, the bonus coverage for doing that, so. Something, something worth looking at is I know that, as I recall, that's geared towards less of the short internships like, like, as any connection does, or like, I don't know. We probably the most of us were at school where you did, you could do a semester working for a business, half day as a, as a part of your educational program. And so I think, I got the impression it's geared more towards a return to those sort of apprenticeships or things as part of the school right there. It may be a good fit for some of our students, but probably a heads up, we totally put somebody like that on my own list. I get the couple of schools in the area that might be something that's, so. Questions for Davis? Okay, so we're ready.
Hey, we asked Casey to gather participation numbers. You have a hard copy in front of you. Extraordinary participation. And, and, and I know you, you've noted from the personnel action report where we're adding assistants. Like for instance, we added a, an assistant for girls junior high, an assistant for boys junior high. We added an assistant for high school, girls track, high school, boys track. Our numbers are just the case where it's great, we're getting high, high volume of participation. And in order to, you know, continue to provide our kids a good experience, we're going to just, with those numbers, we need additional adult. But you can see we've got.
So as we look, as we look at it, you know, assuming for, for 50 high school-ish. Yeah, you're looking at roughly the average amount of activities involved in the after years. I realize it's probably not an equal like, but I think there's a lot of activities, so. So yeah, I think those are great numbers. The middle school is similar to, or sort of in there. And that's another, almost three of our students in middle school, so. Would be great, it breaks me through that, so.
A good boy girl balance. That's nice.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's exciting to help meditate that our kids are participating things outside the school day. And we just want to continue to provide them a really good experience and do so.
And the, the, the data is great. I think it's in the whole, the whole that we plan out or know the goal set. See where we're at in the primary mission. We've got things all, all systems to be gaited. So I think, you know, the, the next question we probably have is just kind of, you know, is there something, is there a population we're missing that, 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 that you directed, so what, what, what they can enter the cell? But I think that's, I suspect that number is not a huge number of kids that don't have anything to say in the financial relationship or something. There's something, so I think the question is, I think.
Well, we don't have right now on the, the plate that we're offering this spring out. I believe that's 20, just a little over 20, 20 plus that are going to participate.
I talked with Deena and she said she had 30 interested, but all spots covered from, from the play and, and.
Yeah, I think, I think it's ready. The thing, the thing we don't capture up here is, is, which is, which would be useful is also just things that was involved in Spanish. So there's other things, there's other ones that you're involved with, that maybe you don't have a competitive aspect, that you know, you don't see. Not zero bias on it. You know, there's, there's things that, there's things that are out there that we have kids are engaged with that. You can probably have a whole list. When it's, when you're at, when you get the, 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 you're nice to see kind of a, just a snapshot of, you know, where we're at and the kind of, you know, what's that and it's left at the end of, you know. Plenty of kids, plenty of kids didn't have something that they were engaged in, so.
Well, because those, I mean, there's, the kids in robotics might not be in.
Yep.
You know, and don't we have trap and?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we have a archery?
Yeah.
And we can, we can certainly, this is a good basic list.
There's a lot more that are a little bit different than these that we don't have, so.
So these are, these are, these are the, these are the big ones you want to speak about because there are no lines that, you know.
I don't know for sure. I mean, what, what's Casey's overall role in some of that? I mean, obviously he can collect the data, but Casey really wouldn't have to say with the Spanish club, right? I mean, his activities, I understand that, but, so when we ask Casey, he probably wouldn't even think of.
Yeah, he just, he just.
Yeah, because they're not recording numbers the same way that the other ones, like, that they want to see coaches a lot.
Yeah.
These resources, the other parts are more, as soon as we're, we're self-sustained, it's a self-sustained, you got to be thinking about the junior optimism, you know, get that, kind of, you get those circuits, they're, they're, so. Yeah, I think it's great. And we've got so much activity and there's so pieces, so, so.
Just opportunities. That's what we wanted to offer. Just give everybody an opportunity to participate something.
Yeah, that's, at the end of the day, I think that's one of the goals is to just make sure that you've got options for everybody. Lady, ready, Dana?
Yeah, I just wanted to share this again. General Air put it together for us. They just finished testing for the spring. We'll do it again late April, mid-May. But you can see, I guess if you take these charts up above, like converted it down below, you can see, you know, 22 weeks of loss of instruction from last March closure to, to August when we returned full time. Fifty-two percent of our first grade kids were at or above grade level. Now, we, we left in March, we had about eight, that, that first grade cohort when they were kindergartners. And then we stopped school March 2020. They were, they were about 85, 86% efficient. So 22 weeks without, we come back, now we're 52%. You can see we're making gains as far as getting back to where we left off. We're, no doubt, we're all confident that when we in the school year in May, we'll, we'll be at that mark or we'll exceed that mark of the 85%.
We'll grab another data point then.
You bet. Yeah, we'll grab another data point. The goal is, we want to make sure that where we were last March, we want back to that spot so that we can erase this deficit. And you can see in second grade, we erased it. Third grade, we erased it and we're darn close in first grade. Kindergarten data, they're a little bit different, but we'll bring that data to you in May also. We anticipate. Again, our goal is every, every student will be reading at or above grade level by Christmas. You know, we've got that goal of every student in kindergarten will be able to recognize all letters and sounds of the alphabet. And then by the end of their kindergarten year, will be reading at level D, which is that kind of that mark or that goal that we have for first kindergarten ability.
Right. And, and as I, just as I read that, the total moment, puts a finger, I'm looking at that, that.
Correct. Yes.
And I don't want to start to try to isolate things, Davis, but I think it would be interesting to watch next year to, to separate the kids that were here and the kids that came into our district this fall. Because I think some of the kids that are coming from other districts that didn't maybe stay as engaged as we were might not be quite up to the same level. And I think we'd want to see some data that shows the difference.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. And, you know, we, if we, if we get new students that spent a year in another district that had limited, correct, classroom face, face time.
Correct.
I, I, we'll, we'll, they'll, they'll probably stand out. And so they'll be part of our early intervention discussions and teams. And we always put that faces on the data to where, okay, group call, you know, there, this and that. So we'll be able to separate that data out.
I guess that's, that's a good question. Is there, because this year was snowing there.
Right.
Is there something we're planning to do for kids that moved into the district over this year, the spring, or are there, that are starting to fall to make sure that, you know, that, that we can identify and, you know, the early intervention process will catch them a few weeks of the school. We, I don't, you know, it's been an element of things coming in third grade. Are we doing a, are we trying to do a reassessment of those, if you stop in and move up the site, then I feel where we're at. And sometimes this year, you have a, a high school level, try to assess it, and if people move in from out of state to your fourth class, it can be kind of, I just. That wasn't, that's what you guys thought about, but I think that, yeah, we want to make sure we have a resource to help, help the students to be the most moving forward. How do we identify those kids as quickly as possible and?
I mean, Davis and I, we talked about conversations with parents to say, you know, you understand your child was not engaged last year by face to face. And yeah, I don't know. Something to think about.
Probably, probably our early indicator will be conversations. Yeah, say how to enroll, just getting kind of what, what, what parents feel.
Right.
I mean, where do you feel your child's at? What was your child's experience last year?
Yep.
So, and then we'll go from there. We can, you know, set things up early, early from day one. We're, we're assessing pretty closely so that we get a good feel that way.
Yeah, it's, it's just, you know, I mean, I know you hate to jump into this year and have a person who's sort of first couple days back, it's been assessment, but at the same time. Yeah, it's, it's one of those things where, and I didn't really know about where people are at because there's been these, even students here, there'll be, there'll be some burnout, you know, it's been, it's been a long year. Everybody, and I just, yeah, there may be less of the, the parents staying on top of it over the summer, and just because, you know, it's a B. It's around, I might do a grand, or, or this summer, kids can see their grandparents who they haven't seen a lot, so.
Okay, um, work to the updates. Anything you're for this month?
We didn't get the bids back on the, the building over here. And, I don't want to talk about that, but.
They'll, they'll decide to do.
Yeah, there was, there was one that was reasonable. Yeah. And then we, we're still in some conversations with the city about the lease arrangement for the, for their, for our facility here attached to our central office. And we're going to, maybe spend a couple of minutes after the meeting tonight, we'll, we'll kind of their counter proposal. And we'll, we'll update you next month.
Sounds good. With that, we want to consider that. Any people out?
I've been aware of.
Hearing nothing, I'll make that again.
And then there's the, there's the bid on the building, so it's on that. So I'll make a motion if you can send it.
Which am I gonna, second?
Second, I will. All of the papers you can find by saying not. Alright, motion period unanimously.
Yeah, I will point out, the copy machine contract, Sean did it. Sean spent a lot of time, a lot of time working to get in those. He, I think about six, six vendors. And each vendor met with Rosie, who does her copies and just, he took them around to make sure that this is a little patient, these are the specs, and he spent a lot of time on this. And I, I think we're, we're in good shape with how this came out. And Marco was actually the company that they oversee our printers. So you'll be able to do both our printer and our printer. And they were open. Sorry.
I'm, I'm, I was, I was reading something else I was signing.
That's fine, that's fine.
So next up is board policy 300 and 600 series.
So, policy committee, any comments, thoughts?
There are a couple tweaks to one of the policies, some weird wording that I sent to them today. And we will change that to present next month, but they were both in agreement.
Yes.
I should have, I should have lined out master contract. I didn't. I just put it in front of C, so I explained that to them. And then there's another one on homework that Tim and Rick discussed a little bit about removing one of the paragraphs and making sure that we do.
Yeah, I, I guess the only thing I would, I would suggest is to release on that one. Could be noticed on that next one.
Yes.
But I would, I guess, on the homework policy, the word paragraph in there, I just thought was too descriptive. You're in on all the papers because I was saying, aye, aye, closed. Motion period unanimously. Next up is board policy. We've got the second reading of board policy 102 and 411 point three. Any, did they make any changes, Danny?
No.
Yeah, they're ready to go?
Yeah. These, these are just two that I, as he sent us to Rio and he made the changes.
Okay. Scroll back a little bit, Davis, so I can see it. So I'll make the motion if I can make it. Okay, I'll make a motion for the second reading of board policy 102 and 411 point three.
Motion by the other house.
Second.
Second, I will. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of the papers you can find by saying not. Aye, aye, closed. Motion period unanimously. Uh, next up is center public hearing on, why is this magic? She's just going on as well. So we got to do two things as part of this. And so we're going to set public hearing, we're going to set the max, we're going to set publish rate. And so Pat magically appeared from, from the basement or the, the office down below us.
Yeah.
But that, that's even probably on the floor. So that's all good. So Pat, you want to, Brian, this is a brief, you, you remember the committee? You know, give us just an update on all of this.
Yep, absolutely. Leave a second against all the files to it. Tax rate right now as published would be 1627, which is a two cent increase over current year. And part of that demonstration at the end showed that a property tax on a $250,000 assessed house, the annual increase would be about $56. The five cent variable was what Dan was suggesting. That would be the highest thing to come to. So I thought two cents was kind of in between for that. That will provide the max cash reserve levy, which is a little over $10,000. Fund the management fund fully for next year. We've been underfunding it for a couple of years now. And we'll be using debt service to pay debt service. We won't use save to buy it down. So that gets us to raise 1627.
So just a one question. One question we had, or I had, I mean, I went through that, it's just, we talked a little bit about the management fund and, you know, and one of the questions was, you know, how's our balance in that? You know, if we went up another penny on the management fund, is that? We're looking at, you know, having to, potentially doing another retirement offering, you know, three, five years out, and, you know, we just have that. Look at, or potentially one is going to be going through the right amount. Now, where we definitely must have in terms of going with two cents, which is worth three cents, or what?
We can tweak it up more if you guys want to.
I guess, I guess, how much an impact is that? If you do one cent on the, on the, on the, on the fund. Because I, we kind of, absolutely no more than five cents, which kind of always said, you know, you can, you made all the priorities work into the two cents, but I was just kind of wondering. We always give you these magic commands, you tell you to go off, you do your magic, but all these priorities. And you, I was, I was just trying to, you know, what's that one cent? I think we did another one cent, will be the difference there on management funds.
One second.
Davis, come back to the slide you're in there.
Do you guys have any questions? I'm aware I essentially, I guess, would be concerned, wanting to get any questions. I'm trying to kind of keep it very gentle.
I guess, real quickly, Pat, I really guess that may ask, we, me and the kids really go, we've been kind of softer on the management fund. And so now we're trying to maybe build that up a little bit, but the rationale for adding another penny, what, what's the ultimate goal for that fund? I mean, where, where do you want to go with it?
Purpose enhancement? Well, one, I know our insurance.
Exactly.
Way, way of.
Yeah, EMC is right.
Our EMC insurance, our liability insurance.
I was looking to see kind of look up to.
Potentially a 20% increase they told us in the property line, only side of it. It's going to have to go up about five to six year ratio. Okay, within that time span, where are we going to be at for potentially having an early retirement and the other life will be up there. And then trying to think property tax valuations, where are they going to be, and all these things. So that month that I put in there for management will cover the EMC built for me, which was my goal was to. That month that I put in there for management will cover the EMC bill for next year, which was, my goal was to get that done in the remaining, and then just kind of keep building on that. And then obviously, come on, when you get to that point to do your retirement, what type of program that you have to offer, something similar. Or if it's something um different, which doesn't make a question, Pat.
Cause you're talking to those other people. Yeah, yeah, because, I mean, you got a big goal coming up, and, you know, we, we talked about, you know, the last order they were operating, you know, we were looking out, you know. Also, these three years out, offering that again, more like a, probably a five year range. But just having enough money available there to offer package, because we have to, to keep the property tax rates low. We haven't, I'm trying, because we haven't had as much expenditures on it, but now. With the big deal on the insurance and that, and that means we need to build that back up again. So we've got enough money, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna start right in, you know, reasons, but I think, the challenges, the. I also don't want, I don't like if someone will really say, well, in order to pay this, we're gonna have to raise property taxes fifteen cents. And then do like five years to fund, fund management, I just, I'd rather do a small round. For five years rather than a big one. That always surprises all my property tax bills.
And we, we didn't slap five years, slap.
We've done all those things that we've done.
All of it, uh since two thousand fifteen, we've actually lowered property tax and invested forty-two million in facilities. So, and then we've been flat since, since that first initial lowering in two thousand fifteen, so I think now we're looking at, we wanna fund. All those costs, Pat, we're looking at what type of increases?
Two cents, and I think the other thing to keep in mind is we bought down debt service last year, so that's what really got us to that sixteen twenty-five from current year, otherwise we would've been probably up around. Where we're suggesting for potentially next year to be, but that took up a lot of it. I grew up to sixteen twenty-eight, sixteen point two eight three four one. So roughly sixteen twenty-eight, that's four hundred and fifty in the management funds. And what I had originally sent in there was four oh eight oh sixty-five, so that gives us like an under seventy-five, roughly a hundred dollars in management funds. I don't think we're to the point personally as far as worrying about the sensor, they're putting a, dropping the management funds, you will have research and come down from there. But that's what we're really enjoying, we're, I don't know how many years, how potentially we've got to kind of keep building that. So, the same question.
So you're saying sixteen twenty-eight? That what you said?
It's the increase.
That would be if we were putting in management, currently it's sixteen twenty-seven is the.
Right, and, and in two thousand fifteen, we were at.
Two thousand fifteen. Two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we're at sixteen thirty-five, the highest we hit was just under seventeen, and that's in crystal curve.
So sixteen thirty-five, when we, we got the bond issue, and since that time, invested forty-two million in facilities, now we're talking about sixteen twenty, so still well below, yeah.
Seven cents.
Yeah.
And if you're interested, I would guess I'll do, you know, I have to be in the property tax, cause we're out there. Putting your own data, putting your house valuation, and then putting these two rates are current rate next year, so it's gonna be impact to personally.
So on your two hundred and fifty thousand, our house, what's a penny there?
Uh two cents, oh sorry.
Hundred and fifty percent of uh, that's a hundred point five, hundred and fifty, so another sixty bucks, I guess.
Yeah.
Sixty bucks. We've lost in that. Especially because. It was a special sixty bucks for two cents. So, uh, very well.
I re, I keep kind of tweaking stuff until I send it to people, the one thing I don't change unless you guys have kind of given me some indication what changed is that. Sixteen twenty-seven or sixteen twenty.
So I'm the other.
I think.
So much as simple, we, we kind of get run by lines that know more than the nickel, that, uh, as you try to, there are just, you know, some knowledge to expect in all the options, the statements that. So we've had to take a top line of, of no more than a nickel, um Pat was able to squeeze things in. Probably two cents, maybe questions would be, if we're down to two cents, if we go to three cents, yeah. Uh that's, it's, it's not, it's not a huge amount, but it's, and it's. Yeah, we'll, it, it, it's, every little bit helps over time.
Yeah.
From what I'd say.
Well, it's much easier to take small incremental jumps, something like you're saying, come back and say that's for ten cents a one year, yeah.
Yeah.
And you remember years ago, we did not have the morning, the cash reserve levy line for a lot of things, so we really went to the management fund and started putting that in, so we could offer some of the old retirement programs we've done the best.
So I guess what we need is a motion from Jamie or Rick setting the maximum amount, and since the public hearing for April twelfth at five thirty. So that's the fact, that's the common, that's the common, that's the common motion, right?
Right.
Or does that, or maybe some, we did also do a separate motion, I guess, but, no, it's a reason we.
I will motion to set the maximum amount to five percent.
Uh so she's sixteen twenty-seven or sixteen twenty?
Sixteen twenty.
Sixteen twenty-eight, and also to set the. Set the public hearing on budget for April twelve, twenty twenty-one at five thirty.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Juggler.
Any discussion?
So again, we're not saying, we're not saying the rate, right, tonight, so we're here, we're saying the natural rate that legally allowed will prove. Because once it's published, it can't go up that high, so.
So even if you wanna come back and take it down, we can't.
Yeah, we can take, I don't think I have any, or, 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 so. So, um, and what, so any discussion? Hearing none, all the papers, if anybody say aye, aye, opposed. Motion carries, and that public hearing will be here at five thirty, uh similar to last year, we're gonna provide an online option, uh somewhere over there, so I can register. Uh if, if, if they want to, right, can't make, maybe, so, I don't know. Next up, informational items, uh. We already talked about the post budget, so we don't have any more there, um, you guys, the handbooks, um. Taking that cost increase, opposing this year, it's like, not, doesn't do much.
Just some changes in the dates, so.
Uh Ward Murray has been postponed until next month because Chris thought that the beginning of the average year.
I agree.
And so, talking points, uh Rick, you're in my line.
Yeah, I love, I mean, sure, many, but a lot of good stuff, right, so, um obviously the participation numbers, but I, I think that uh. I wanted to just touch again on the PSYAC thing, cause I think that's so important to include those kids. And then allows the community folks that are participating in PSYAC to really get a hands-on, see what's really going on, so we need to continue to do that, I think that's a great learning experience on a lot of laws.
I, well, I, the participation numbers to me is. That's pretty great, especially since there are a lot of things that we don't even have that for, so. Taking that, those other ones into consideration, we've got a lot of kids on. Feels like most of our kids, I know some of them do multiple sports, but, and, and things like that, but we've got. I know something for everyone, I mean, come in all those other things, so. And we're doing a really great job of keeping kids involved.
And then my handle, that's with all these, those two guys, because our high prescription numbers that, that, I think that's, that's good, I just wanna. Give a shout out to my niece, who's, 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 who's. Uh we'll be happy to have her on board. And so, I probably got that film, it was like, uh, her, her positive, they said that's, 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 that's a good thing. Uh I'll build on that, just basically, the one thing, like, clearly we're talking, providing something that I thought about. Last year, but then we got COVID, and we didn't do more with it, there's a number of districts around the state that were having a. High school. Old school one, so they, they had, so they basically, it's a, it's a spring, like junior year through the fall or senior year. And then there's a transition period, a new person that identified, they have to do the fall with the old, with the other person, and then. I don't, I don't, I saw a number of them, I had a feeling the last time, the person, it was like, you look at these people wanting to run with the sessions, and. They're like, six or seven school districts, they're now, maybe a junior. So it's just another opportunity for this to get involved, and, and one of them has been an input from somebody who's, who's gotta sign the name of this package. That may be something to, to look at as we, as we, as we move forward, that may be something that's worth considering, so. Um. I'd refer it off to one of the committees, but I'm not sure if I'm referring to, um. As we've been talking about, I'll talk about that, take us, uh, exactly, to, to, if that's something that's, that's, for our district. With that, um, our next meeting is April fifteenth, uh we have a public hearing on April twelfth, uh you're doing double duty that week. Um if you are traveling on the twelfth, double pay, uh you can get double paid, but twice there, it's still zero. Uh for the board members, if you are traveling on the twelfth, Chris and Davis and I will be here. And you guys can sign electronically, I think, we realize it's not a regular night, so people may have, they have issues. But again, if you, if you're traveling and aren't able to make that night, that during the time, uh security, public, uh, we, we, we did that night. Um I'll say that, and it's been how many years since we've actually had some problem in my public hearing, so, um. I remember the last time we did, um. So, with that, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Most enjoy it, Gary.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Juggler, all of the neighbors, if anybody say aye.